Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 18th, 2019, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Mr. Clerk, if you please, could call the roll.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeBona.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Hughes. Counselor Kane.
Here.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. President Crowell.
Present. Seven members, we have a quorum.
Correct.
At this point, folks and members of the audience, if you would please rise and join me in a moment of silence, taking into consideration those brave men and women who so courageously defend our country. If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselors. Mr. Clerk, if you would, please read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you kind sir. And with that, the first item on the agenda.
First item on the agenda, Mr. President, is Council Order 2019-053, Adoption Five-Year Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I believe this. Counselor Harris?
Send that to the committee.
Say it one more time.
Send that to the environmental committee.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Harris to refer to environmental, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is 2019-054, Amendment Title, Section 7.0, Special Residential Regulations, Adding Section 7.1.14, Definition of Affordable Housing.
Counselor Liang?
Yes.
I'm sorry. One more time.
This is the ordinance committee?
Okay, I'd like to refer. So, motion made by Counselor Liang, seconded by Counselor McCarthy to refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is on its way to ordinance. Next item on the agenda, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is 2019-055. It's a gift, $500.
Motion to waive the reading?
Motion made by Counselor Kane to waive the reading on the motion, Counselor.
Motion to accept the gift and please send a thank you note.
Okay, motion made to accept the gift and send thank you by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
2019-056.
Nope, call the roll.
Oops, sorry about that, Counselor.
Okay.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. President Crowell.
Yes. Seven members, the item, the gift is accepted. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is 2019-056, gift five hundred.
Motion to waive the reading?
Motion made by Counselor Kane.
Motion to accept the gift and please send a thank you note.
Motion made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci. Yes. President Crowell.
Yes. Eight members, the item goes to Senior Citizen Committee. Next item on the agenda is the approval of previous meeting minutes from both February 25th as well as March 4th. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. And the next item on the agenda would be communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Mr. Walker, you have a report from the mayor? Correct?
Three, Mr. President. I believe the mayor has a report from the mayor.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to be the introduction or what have you, but we are joined this evening by Mayor Coke. And Chris, I want to publicly thank you. I know I had to reach out to you before this meeting and ask for an update on the heels of the developing story on Friday. So, thank you to yourself and obviously Mayor Coke for putting together not only an update but a PowerPoint deck. So, we welcome you, Mayor, to the Quincy City Council, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, thank you, Mr. President, for the invitation to give an update. Be happy to do that as best we can and then take some questions at the end. People have questions. I see, Counselor, you didn't wait for the granite tail haircut, I see. You're an early jumper.
No, I don't have much left, so nothing here.
Well, obviously, Friday was an interesting day for the city of Quincy, certainly for me. And by way of introduction, we've been at the table with the environmental, the EPA for more than a year. And when I say that, we've had a team of experts with their experts. We've had a city solicitor. We've also had representatives from Golsman Stores. We've had our Commission of Public Works and City Engineer, along with Woodard and Caron and Ty &amp; Board representatives to outstanding engineering firms that know our systems inside and out. And I believe that we were making, based on the reports from my team, that there was some progress being made. So, it was a little surprising that they did not meet our wish, was to extend the tolling agreement to continue to have these talks to see if we could get there. So, the tolling agreement ended and immediately a suit was filed by the U.S. Attorney's Office on the EPA behalf. So, we walked through it a little bit. So, the EPA has charged Quincy with discharging pollutants in the waterways of the United States. And they use the Clean Waters Act, a federal statute that protects the waterways such as Quincy Bay and Boston Harbor. Now, I want to make sure everybody understands this. This isn't unique to Quincy, that many cities and towns have faced this over the years with the EPA. A number, for example, there's a few there that have either signed consent decrees or are in the process of dealing with this issue in those communities. So, there are a lot more than this, but that just gives you a flavor of some of the other communities. These specific claims in Quincy, claiming that our discharges from the sewer and drains into Boston Harbor, this is quite a reach when you look at this list. Boston Harbor, Quincy Bay, Hingham Bay, Town River Bay, and Ponson River, Town River, and Waymouth, Florida. It's pretty amazing how you make that connection with all those bodies of water. Specific claims in Quincy, as you know, we have a number of brooks and creeks in our city. Some of them are in culverts, under the ground, but I think everyone's familiar with Furnace Brook and Town Brook. We also have Sagamow Creek and Blacks Creek. And these discharges are claiming that they get into those waterways specifically in Quincy as well. Discharges of sewer, Quincy Sewer Collection System to Quincy Bay, that's part of the claim. One of the specific claims is Bayside Road in Squanum. What I want to mention is that, I want to get this perfectly clear right up front, you know, the word out there is that we're dumping sewage into Quincy Bay. Nothing could be further from the truth. When I think of dumping of sewage into Quincy Bay, I think of the old MDC operation at Nut Island, when they literally were dumping raw sewage into Quincy Bay every day from 23 communities south and west of Quincy. What we're seeing is, from time to time, things that happen. You'll see the term SSO, which is sanitary sewer overflow. An SSO could be a house in West Quincy that has a sewer backup, either through tree roots, a diaper got flushed down, and there's a backup in the cellar. When it's more than a gallon, it has to be reported to the EPA. We're very transparent with all our information in all our reporting. So, an SSO is not necessarily dumping sewage into the bay. Now, over time, what happens is, there's times that there's breaks in a sewer line, whether it's part of the public line or private line, that nobody really knows about offhand, and then it migrates into the storm drain system. And then, once it's caught, or there's some counts at a high, we then go and look for the source of some of these issues. We're an old city with an old system, as you can imagine. And I want to get back to Bayside. Bayside Beach and Squanum, I know Counselor Harris is very familiar with it. It's a beautiful section facing Quincy Bay and the Cove area of Squanum, beautiful area. So, Bayside Beach sewers, it gives you an example. It shows you the sewer manhole, which comes up out of the water and vents the pipe. That was a condition in '09. In 2010, we replaced the whole section, replaced the manhole. And then, in 2016, EPA notified the city of a failed sampling result in this area, which led to an investigation. And through that investigation, DPW found that we had some failures in the joint failure along the slope, if you go back to that picture. And rather than just a spot repair, we decided to go a little bit more than that. So, you can see on this map, all the blue is replacement, and the orange and red are relining the sewer lines and pipes out there. It's extensive work that we felt was needed as we went through this. Now, some of you may recall many years ago that the city underwent some major sewer improvements. Counselor, you may have been on the council at the time, Joe Newton. With Quincy Shore Drive and a number of streets off of Quincy Shore Drive, in an effort to alleviate any contamination from those sewer lines to our swimming areas, millions of dollars were spent on that section of Quincy Shore Drive and a number of those streets off of Quincy Shore Drive. So, what bothers me a little bit is, with the EPA, it doesn't sound like the city's been doing anything, when quite the contrary. I said on Friday, I don't need the EPA to tell me that we need clean waters in Quincy. I think we all believe that, and I believe we've all been working on that for the last several decades, not just this administration, but prior administrations, with tens of millions of dollars of improvements to our old infrastructure. There's the result of some of the work at Bayside, the inside of the lines, once they've been cleaned. And what's frustrating is that was fixed, but yet, on paragraph 54 of the complaint, they cite the leak at Bayside Road. You know, we're talking about making repairs and going forward, and they're going backward. This gives you a little idea. On the left side is the sewer collection system. Average pipe age, 96 years, 208 miles of collection. You can see 18 miles of it's within 200 feet of the ocean, which creates some challenges for us. Five miles under the ocean at high tide. More than 8,000 sewer manholes. We have six sewer pumping stations. Now, some of you may not know what a pumping station does, some of the public watching this. We're part of the MWA district, and we're kind of the end of the line. So, when the sewer line, the main trunks come to Quincy, there's an awful lot of affluent already in the pipe. So, in order for our residents to be served, we have six pump stations that literally force our sewage into those lines to get out to Nut Island, which then, as you know, gets pumped underground out to Deer Island for treatment. So, a million dollars annually just on those operations and maintenance. We've been spending $3 million to $5 million annually for repairs of the system. On the drainage side, those average age pipes are more than 100 years, and we've got 150 miles of drain piping. We've got more than 9,000 catch basins and five stormwater pumping stations, same idea. And we spend more than $1,200,000 each year annually in maintenance and repairs to those pump stations in the system. Now, in fiscal '17 improvements, some of you may be familiar with some of these, some of the counselors, some may have been directly involved in some meetings for them, but we've seen sewer improvements to a number of these streets. Montclair, John and Division area, which is over by the Montclair Marsh. We talked about the Bayside Beach lining. Manettard, Bayswater and Parkhurst, Donovan Ward 1, sewer pipelining and lateral repairs. C Street from Manette to Shoreside, sewer line behind Broad Meadows. Utica to Barbara Terrace, new sewer lines. Curtis Street to Carol Lane at Whitwell Street Park, again, relining and some new laterals. Furnace Brook sewers at Blacks Creek area, we actually had a couple of issues. And you can see this work being done. There were some high counts. We did some testing. We found a broken pipe and immediately went in and made repairs and replaced that section of pipe. That's down by the corner of Furnace Brook and Southern artery in Marymount Parkway. You can see the little VERC building on the right, VERC Rentals. The other end of Furnace Brook at Quincy Shore Drive, you can see a whole new section of pipe replacing because through our system of TVing the lines, we have found some cracks in that pipe. So, that was repaired because of the concern being right on Blacks Creek and having an effect on, obviously, on the counts of the water in Blacks Creek and Quincy Bay. Blacks Creek, as you know, is a very important flood control basin that helps to keep West Quincy from being overburdened, as well as parts of Ward 1, Lafayette and Putnam Street. And the tide gates at Blacks Creek play a big role in that. Fiscal '18 improvements, we did work at Fayette Farrington from Holbrook to Brook, spot repairs and sewer pipelining. Some of you may see those trucks out there, relining a number of the sewers. And I know I saw them in Wallaston yesterday. Linden Street to Wentworth in North Quincy, sewer pipelining and manhole sealing. Canton Road to Gordon around Quincy Commons, excavating repair and short liners. And that's a good example. Quincy Commons, some of you may know, it's an apartment complex owned by the Corcrens. It's on French Street, Arnold Road, and a number of those streets and around the back there. That was the old milk plant for White Brothers Milk many years ago. But we're having high counts on some of our storm drains in that area. And through a lot of investigative work by the DPW, they found that under the building, the apartment building at Quincy Commons, there was a broken sewer line. Now, it wasn't backing up into the apartment complex, so the landlord wasn't aware of it. But because of the high counts, it was migrating into the storm drains. We traced it back, traced it back, and found those. And then, of course, the landlord, we made them make the repairs immediately. So, things like that happen in the system periodically. We're an old city with old infrastructure, and things can migrate into the system. Years ago, we did a lot of what was called the smoke testing, which was many years ago when a contractor was hooking a line up to the house. In some cases, they hooked up to the storm drain rather than the sewer line, and I'm sure they were doing that without knowledge. But what they do is they put the smoke in the pipes and they watch the vent chimneys on the houses. So, if the smoke went into the storm drain, you see it coming up through the house, then that sewer line wasn't hooked up properly. A lot of those, if not all of the ones we found, were fixed and correctly tied in. So, there's been an ongoing effort for the last couple of decades to make these repairs. So, fiscal '18 improvements, we made quite a few. Avalon Beach and Bay Point in 2018, we had some issues there. They were repaired. And then, of course, fiscal '19 this year, currently underway, we just opened the bids for Newcombe Street and McGrath Highway, Sharon Road, Colby Road, Faxon Road, Watkins Street and Moore Street area, the Marymount Parkway, cross-country means under parkland, not under any necessarily streets with homes on them, and then the Amory Street area. Designs are underway to repair the Island Avenue Peterson Road sewers, Clement Terrace and Elmwood area sewers over in Montclair as well. And then, this year, we also won through some hard work, some low-interest state loans for some additional repairs. The Strand Pumping Station, some of you may recall during that last March, literally it was March Madness in Quincy last year with the weather events, and the Strand Pumping Station was overburdened because of the coastal waters coming over, essentially flooding that out. These repairs will do some things to that station that, going forward, will protect it against another incident like that. And then, $5.6 million for a number of coastal repairs, again, under that state low-interest loan program. There's the Strand Pumping Station. It's certainly been operating well since that time, but this will allow it to be protected. Now, over the last few years, we've been, as a city, it's been recognized that we make great improvements, not just on Wallaston Beach. And I'm going to remind everybody, I know some of the ward councils that live on the coast, we've got beaches in various parts of the city, quite a few of them in Hausnach and Germantown and Adams Shore. We have them in Squanum as well. So, Quincy Point, Avalon, and Mount Street. So, there's a number of beaches that we maintain as well. And our health department, as you know, does regular testing at all these beaches as well. And we've seen a steady improvement in the conditions, in the water quality. Is it perfect? No, it's not. Hopefully, someday, we'll get there, but there's a lot of challenges to get there. In fact, in '16, we were cited by a number of associations on the city's work on working hard to clean up the waterways through programs with the stormwater control treatment and so forth. So, kind of a mixed opinions here, which seem to be recognized by the private industry that we're doing some great things going forward, making great improvements, yet the EPA has sought to find a way to have the U.S. Attorney on their behalf sue the city of Quincy for polluting the waterway. So, I think it's fair and important to reiterate that the city of Quincy is never dumping sewage into any of our waterways. Does some sewage find its way into the waterways through various sources from time to time? Yes, it happens. We're trying to eliminate all of those times so it doesn't happen. And I would suggest that, as I did on Friday, that as a kid that grew up in Quincy, and I remember my mother taking us all down to Wallaston Beach and trying to grab a spot, it used to be jammed. Didn't test in those days. I would suggest that the water quality is 100 times cleaner than it was when we were kids. In fact, in those days, the Moon Island sewage vats were active, and as I said earlier, the Nut Island Treatment Plant was dumping raw sewage directly into the harbor. We survived. Some may say there was some damage from it, I don't know, but we did survive it. And I don't say that lightly. My point is, we have made great progress during the last several decades on clean water for the people of our city. And I reiterate that, I don't need a federal bureaucrat who doesn't answer to anybody like we do, to the people every couple of years, to tell us that we should clean our water. We're cleaning our water. It's an important issue for the people of the city. We're a coastal community, 27 miles of coastline. We've got fishermen and lobstermen that depend livelihoods on the cleanliness of the water as well. So, I certainly resent some of that implication. I also want to thank and acknowledge Congressman Lynch, who stood with me on Friday and has indicated his complete support to the city to try to work through this process in the coming weeks and months ahead. So, I'd be happy to open up for questions. If anybody has any questions, I do have some of the representatives of the team here that, if it gets too technical, I'll certainly pass it off to them, and certainly commit to keeping you apprised of things going forward.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mayor. Just kind of first past going through your presentation here, I think one of the other, you know, highlights, and I didn't see it in there, was the reconstruction of the Quincy Point Pump Station, which I think was like $3.5 million, $4 million bucks. So, that was, you know, another item that we invested in. You know, I had a little back and forth with your representative over the weekend. The question came to me in the form of, you know, one of my constituents that obviously read sort of the media depiction of what was presented from the EPA. And, you know, the question became, so they live down in the Quincy Point area, they were talking specifically about Avalon Beach, and believe it or not, there will be people swimming lapses in there towards the end of April. So, the question was, do I have, is there anything for me to be concerned about?
No.
With, no?
No, absolutely not. As I said, from time to time, something happens, we get some crossover in the system. We track it down and fix it as soon as we possibly can. Keep in mind, too, that, you know, the storm drains collect water in a storm event, and things fall into the storm drain. We have a very aggressive catch basin cleaning program we do on a regular basis, but you've got dog feces, you've got, somebody's washing the car, the chemical's washed under the storm drain. There's all kinds of potential ways for things to get into that system. It's very difficult for the city to monitor that closely for every storm drain, more than 9,000 of them, catch basins across the city. So, I remind people and encourage people in the neighborhoods to be aware of that when they're, like I remember, as kids, would see people changing their oil over the storm drain. Thank God, I think we've come a long way from those days, but, you know, people have to be cognizant out in the neighborhoods. But, you know, there's bird waste, there's dog waste, there's other things that get into the system that is not necessarily controlled by the city. But all the improvements we continue to make are important. We're going to continue to do that. And I think it's been about $6 to $8 million a year. This year, we're poised to spend $10 million on sewer and drain improvements across the city, which is all going to result, I think, in better water quality.
Thank you for answering the question. Counselor DeBona, then Counselor McCarthy.
Mr. President, Mayor, thank you for coming in and discussing this tonight. A lot of the public had some questions and concerns. I know you had a press conference right on Friday, which was very, very helpful, and you're following it up tonight, so you're not shying away from it at all by coming out here. So, thank you for that. You know, just looking back here, reading the Patriot Ledger article, talking about going back to 2009 and then coming into 2018 here, they're saying that the fines are...
Yet the EPA has sought to find a way to have the U.S. Attorney on their behalf sue the City of Quincy for polluting the waterway. So I think it's fair and important to reiterate that the City of Quincy is never dumping sewage into any of our waterways. Does some sewage find its way into the waterways through various sources from time to time? Yes, it happens. We're trying to eliminate all of those times so it doesn't happen. And I would suggest that, as I did on Friday, that as a kid that grew up in Quincy, and I remember my mother taking us all down to Wallaston Beach and trying to grab a spot. It used to be jammed. Didn't test in those days. I would suggest that the water quality is 100 times cleaner than it was when we were kids. In fact, in those days, the Moon Island Sewerage Vats were active. And as I said earlier, the Nut Island Treatment Plant was dumping raw sewage directly into the harbor. We survived. Some may say there was some damage from it, I don't know, but we did survive it. And I don't say that lightly. My point is, we have made great progress during the last several decades on clean water for the people of our city. And I reiterate that I don't need a federal bureaucrat who doesn't answer to anybody like we do, to the people every couple of years, to tell us that we should clean our water. We're cleaning our water. It's an important issue for the people of the city. We're a coastal community, 27 miles of coastline. We've got fishermen and lobstermen that depend livelihoods on the cleanliness of the water as well. So I certainly resent some of that implication. I also want to thank and acknowledge Congressman Lynch who stood with me on Friday and has indicated his complete support to the city to try to work through this process in the coming weeks and months ahead. So I'd be happy to open up for questions if anybody has any questions. I do have some of the representatives of the team here that if it gets too technical, I'll certainly pass it off to them. And certainly commit to keeping you apprised of things going forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just kind of first pass going through your presentation here. I think one of the other highlights, and I didn't see it in there, was the reconstruction of the Quincy Point Pump Station, which I think was like $3.5 million, $4.5 million. So that was another item that we invested in. You know, I had a little back and forth with your representative over the weekend. The question came to me in the form of, you know, one of my constituents that obviously read sort of the media depiction of what was presented from the EPA. And, you know, the question became, so they live down in the Quincy Point area, they're talking specifically about Avalon Beach. And believe it or not, there will be people swimming lapses in there towards the end of April. So the question was, is there anything for me to be concerned about?
No.
With... No?
No, absolutely not. As I said, from time to time, something happens, we get some crossover in the system. We track it down and fix it as soon as we possibly can. Keep in mind, too, that, you know, the storm drains collect water in a storm event. And things fall into the storm drain. We have a very aggressive catch basin cleaning program we do on a regular basis. But you've got dog feces, you've got somebody's washing the car, the chemicals washed under the storm drain. There's all kinds of potential ways for things to get into that system. It's very difficult for the city to monitor that closely for every storm drain, more than 9,000 of them, catch basins across the city. So I remind people and encourage people in the neighborhoods to be aware of that when they're... Like, I can remember as kids, would see people changing their oil over the storm drain. Thank God, I think we've come a long way from those days. But, you know, people have to be cognizant out in the neighborhoods. But, you know, there's bird waste, there's dog waste, there's other things that get into the system that is not necessarily controlled by the city. But all the improvements we continue to make are important. We're going to continue to do that. And I think it's been about $6 to $8 million a year. This year, we're poised to spend $10 million on sewer and drain improvements across the city, which is all going to result, I think, in better water quality.
Thank you for answering the question. Counsel DeBona, then Counsel McCarthy.
Mr. President, Mayor, thank you for coming in and discussing this tonight. A lot of the public had some questions and concerns. I know you had a press conference right on Friday, which was very, very helpful, and you're following it up tonight. So you're not shying away from it at all by coming out here. So thank you for that. You know, just looking back here, reading the Patriot Ledger article, talking about going back to 2009 and then coming into 2018 here, they're saying that the fines are, or the violations are before November 2 of 2015 is $37,500, and then after that, it's $54,833. Now, have we had any violations? Have they been fining us yet?
There's been no fines enforced. That's a point of leverage that they've been using. And, you know, my argument from this side of the street is that, look, we've been making $6 to $8 million worth of improvements every year. We're doing all the right things. We have not been ignoring this issue. For me, to pay a fine would be acknowledgement we're doing something wrong. There's been no intention of dumping of any sewage in our waterways. So that gets very disappointing that the U.S. Attorney uses that kind of leverage. You know, I'll stop there.
So have they given us a violation at all? Have they fined us yet? Or this is just a scare tactic?
There's been no fine yet. It's been on the table as far as the discussions go. When we were looking at trying to work through the talks about what kind of improvements we would make, and one of the things we suggested was, instead of a fine, why don't we use that money to do some more of the improvements? So I thought we were making some pretty good progress based on my team reports. I didn't sit in the meetings directly. They were led by our team, legal and engineering team. So representatives for the EPA were there, as well as the Assistant U.S. Attorney who was handling the case for the EPA. And, you know, there was a lot of good discussion, engineering talk, about further improvements that we're going to make. But there doesn't seem to be any acknowledgement by the agency of all the improvements that we have made, which is, again, disappointing, discouraging.
We did our capital improvement plan. Not only did we do roads, we also did sewer maintenance repairs. And that was huge that we appropriated. I was happy to be a part of appropriating that funding because I think we need to be proactive and mitigate a lot of these issues. You know, looking forward to, obviously, this is going to be a situation where there's going to be attorneys involved, and is there going to be any legal fees, attorney costs? Do you foresee or anticipate how much that's going to cost for us, the City of Quincy?
Not at this point. I mean, it's part of the legal budget for the law department, I should say. You know, we have professional services there outside contract. We've been paying lawyers from Gelson and Sewer Stores who are specialized in environmental issues. They've been at the table, they've been working with us and guiding us. We've been paying those bills along the way.
Do you anticipate going out a little further? How long do you think this will take, this whole scenario or issue?
I don't know. At this point, it's been assigned to a magistrate judge. And I'm assuming at some point we'll be hearing from them. And that judge will be asking the parties to come together and try to come to some resolution, which we're committed to doing. There's no question. We all want, obviously, better quality of water. It's interesting because the EPA seems to have a tight timetable on this side of the street, yet, you know, we applied for permits to replace the tide gates at Blacks Creek more than five years ago. Think about that, more than five years ago. Now, these tide gates that we have in place, we have to close them at dead-low tide. That's the only time you can close them and open them. Therefore, they have to be closed longer than you probably would like them to be closed. We want to replace them with tide gates that can close and open at any time during a storm event, which then allows you to have less closures and allow for the health of the marsh to improve. But we also know what happens when we have a major storm event and those tide gates aren't closed properly. Look what happened to Putnam Street and Lafayette, some 50 homes were affected. And one of the bureaucrats said, we really don't care, those houses shouldn't have been built there. That's the response you get from some of these bureaucrats. You know, there should be no gates there, the water should just run through. Well, if that was the case, we're going to have a lot of issues with a lot of our neighborhoods. So there's got to be a balance, flood control and responsibility to the environment. So five years in a permitting process, it's okay for them to hold us up, but women not meeting a schedule on this side of the street in their mind, or in their view. So we're contemplating countersuing on that issue.
That's all the questions that I have. I appreciate you coming in tonight, Mayor, and speaking about this in the public because a lot of the questions have been answered tonight. And I know we'll foresee future situation. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Counsel.
Just a couple of comments and a quick question. You know, some of these specific claims in Quincy are pretty broad. As you said, Waymouth, Four River, they probably could delisted the Atlantic Ocean if they wanted to. But particularly, they picked on Bayside Road and Squanum. Were there any other locations that were cited specifically?
Well, you get into the... They don't tell you when. They come out and they test certain areas. As I said, our health department does regular testing along the beach areas, along outfall areas. So in their testing, they found spikes at different times. Again, when you get into the outfall areas, it's very challenging and difficult to find the source of that. We continue to do that with the programs we have. We continue to inspect our sewer lines with TV cameras. We're always looking for those sources to get rid of them, obviously. The Bayside was a direct pipe broken right by the water that was seeping into the ocean. That was where we moved quickly and got that repaired. So, yeah, there are a number of those examples, Counsel.
No, and after last year, I got very familiar with outfall pipes. And one of the items that I think that just jumped right to me when this came out on Friday was how much this administration has done on infrastructure. And specifically, a lot of infrastructure in regards to sewer lines and outfall pipes, the Seawall Project, which has a lot of outfall pipes that run along C Street all the way up into Marymount. Constantly, my connection with Al Graziosi and DPW and Paul Costello constantly talk to them and how much work has been put in. You bring up the old story about the Nut Island Treatment Plant and back in the day when they didn't care and it just went out into West Way off of Pettix Island and...
It was the EPA in those days, Dave.
Yeah. And I know everybody jumped in, feds, the state, and the city. And the water out there is beautiful now. It's quite a change. When I was down there, it wasn't so beautiful. There was discoloration, you could see it when you're out boating, blue to brown, and it was pretty bad. So I know the work that you folks and administrations before you have attempted with Quincy. And it's just a community that is on the coast and a community that probably like, you could probably list many other communities that probably don't do as much due diligence as we do. For a city this size, we keep a good eye on a lot of the activities, outfall pipes and what goes in those pipes. And there's survey after survey that I know that goes on the DPW. So you have my support throughout this whole thing. Because I've seen what the DPW and you folks have done over the last two years. Before I was on the council, I saw the improvements that were thrown into place. I was just quickly making notes on some of the Ward 1 locations, but all the locations in general, to try to write it. And it's only been one way, we've just been going up. No one's backed off of this ever over the course of more than the last decade. So, yeah, my support and whatever I can do to help. I know that the city has done its homework and is not negligent at all.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other counselors, questions, thoughts for the... Counsel Palamucci? Is that a... Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, when did the tolling agreement go into effect, roughly?
We started about a year and a half ago in discussion, so the tolling agreement probably started that at that time. It ended on Friday.
And that was a complaint that they brought against us prior to entering into the tolling agreement, relatively soon prior to entering into the tolling agreement?
Yeah, they raised a number of issues with us, yes.
So fair to say that we've used that as a blueprint moving forward as to what they identified as violations of the Clean Waters Protection Act in order to move forward with making repairs and remediation work?
I think there's been more agreement at the table than disagreement.
But we've been... This is a complaint that didn't come out on Friday. This is a complaint that was essentially revived on Friday from several years ago, right?
Well, it went from discussion to a lawsuit on Friday.
But all of the items that they raised in the lawsuit were items that they had made us aware of in the years prior, right?
I don't know about all of them, but I certainly know that some of the issues that we talked about along the way were taken care of.
Right.
And there was no appetite from the EPA to hear about all the things we have been doing on the improvement side.
Beyond what they were raising?
Correct.
So it was... I haven't reviewed the complaint specifically, but there's the list of items that they say are violations. There are ones we've addressed, like the one you pointed out, I believe, on Friday, and you know it to us tonight.
Yeah, for example, they're interested in 200 feet within the waterway. Well, our storm drains go back far, far longer than that. So this stuff, as I gave some descriptions about examples like French Street that can send to the system that eventually gets into the outfalls. So all the work we do further back has a great impact on it as well. They don't seem to want to recognize that.
And that's not a part of the discussion that we've been having with... Well, it's a part of what we're saying to them, but not a part of what they're taking into consideration with the filing of the complaint. And the reason why I'm asking the questions, I'm just trying to get a better sense of kind of our engagement with the federal agencies involved. Obviously, this body hasn't been, the administration has, appropriately so. But in terms of identifying what work needs to be done and what work is prioritized in the city moving forward, does this change that determination that you make in any way?
I think the problem at the table has been the amount of work and the cost of that work going forward is very aggressive, very aggressive. And, you know, we've had a very balanced approach to this over the years, both from the sewer water budget and sewer repairs, but also in the drain budget on the city side, also sewer rehab fund from developers and constantly doing rehab and improvements. They want to go far, far further than that. I don't have a dollar amount, but it's in the tens of millions.
And I suppose I don't want you to answer this question publicly, but I wonder what effect this has on the priorities that we, as a city, will undertake moving forward in this. I don't want you to answer that because I want it to be used against us later on, but I would think that...
What I can say, Counsel, is I believe it's in the best interest that we have control over the improvements, that I don't want to give that control up to a federal agency.
Right. No, I understand that. And it's kind of what I'm driving at, too, is that, you know, knowing what they've identified as issues, having that, and then also from a perspective, a global perspective here in the city, citywide, not just addressing those, addressing those in part, but also the issues that germinate throughout the city to try and upgrade the infrastructure. And I guess my fear, just speaking, my fear or my worry would be that we only cater to the list that they have come up with, and that that becomes our priority, rather than, I think, the approach that we've had, as the administration's had, that the city's taken to upgrading the problematic areas throughout the entire system and not just the specified areas that have been identified by the federal agencies, you know?
I concur with that.
I mean, just knowing about the process that we've gone through with, you know, flood, obviously, been more involved in flood mitigation and storm water than the sewage. But knowing the difficulties we've had with the federal government in terms of permitting and trying to apply common sense to some of the regulations when we're trying to make improvements, you know, not just there, I guess it applies to Quincy Center as well, some of the issues that we've had with jumping through hoops to try and make progress in the city. What's the next steps with this? Now that this has happened, you said you're contemplating and you'll make that determination with the attorneys as whether or not the city will countersue. But beyond that, what is the next step with them and our interaction with them?
Well, I've instructed my solicitor to prepare for the countersuit on that issue. And we will be hearing, I assume, from the Judge Magistrate on getting together both parties and setting a schedule going forward. We have not heard that yet.
And so are we no longer... Now that they filed this, immediately when the tolling agreement lapses, does that... We're not in the room, I'm not in the room. I don't know what these discussions are like and what the groups are like. But is it more adversarial now that they filed it? Do we go from sitting at the table and talking about mutually how to make things better and what their priorities are and what our objectives are? Does it go to just, we're going to fix what we're going to fix, and we're just going to fight it out in litigation in terms of the stuff that they want us to fix?
Well, I think there was an, you know, honest attempt by both sides on the engineering side of it. I'm not so sure the representative of the West Attorney's Office was as interested in getting to that point of a settlement.
So will our engineering folks continue to speak to their engineering folks to try and move forward, or does that end now with this?
Well, that will happen as the Judge Magistrate instructs both teams to get together. Other than that, I think we're probably restricted from doing that. You know, it's my hope that we can settle this out, that this doesn't result in continued adversarial relationship with the federal government. You know, I think with the Congressman working on our behalf, as well as a reasonable magistrate, I think that we'll be able to figure this all out.
That's one of the, I think, identifiable downsides, is that, you know, then the cooperative kind of engagement with the federal authorities then ceases because now we're fighting with them, you know, we're in litigation. Never been in litigation with... I've seen two parties who are in litigation work cooperatively. I mean, and usually litigation comes when the ability to work cooperatively to settle any differences is gone. So it's disappointing that clearly they felt that we were at that point mutually, that we were at that point and could no longer work together cooperatively, and that they took this action. So I hope we'll, and I trust that we'll continue to do what we need to do to make the waterways.
There's a couple of other legal aspects of this that I defer to Mr. Timmons on, that along the way, the United States Attorney General had issued a memo to the Department of Justice on these kinds of cases. So, you know, we thought that things would go in a different direction. There's also a case from Hawaii going before the Supreme Court about this whole issue of water quality of, does the Clean Act really apply also to those issues of storm drain systems where stuff falls in? It's not intentional, it's not emanating from the sewer line. So there's other things happening at that level that I think may help us as we go forward.
And there's some favorable case law, and that as well as when it was interpreted relative to groundwater, that it was originally applied, the Clean Waters Act was originally applied to groundwater and seepage that came through groundwater and the feds in an action got smacked down, saying, no, that's an overextension of what the act covers. So it'll be interesting to see how that works out. Lastly, just, do we, should we be planning for any type of financial calamity in terms of fines from this lawsuit? Or is it too early to tell?
I think it's way early to get into that. I really do.
Typically, do the fines go back towards the projects, or are they literally just punitive? You know, if we get fined $1 million, is it $1 million put into something?
There's been settlements over the years where it's redirected to projects, although on many of the cases, they do collect some sort of a fine, whether the dollar amount may be varies from different communities.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and I look forward to the administration keeping us up to date, you know, even just by way of a letter from Mr. Timmons that comes out periodically about how this is progressing so that...
Gladly do that. And I'd also say they reverse. If you have some questions that you want to talk to the city solicitor direct about, which probably isn't best to do it in the public realm right now because we're in the rhythm of a suit, feel free to do that as well.
Well, thank you for coming and providing information to us tonight.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Mahoney.
Hi, Mayor, how are you?
Good.
So thank you for coming out. I'm sure this isn't what you were planning on doing on maybe last Thursday for your Monday night. So I do have a couple of questions. And so the EPA, and you've kind of mentioned them along the way, the EPA and the City of Quincy, we're working back and forth together. You said that, I'm not sure of the terminology, is it tolling or is it a tolling agreement that you had?
Yes. Yes, once the, once the issues were brought to the city's attention, we sat down and both sides agreed on a tolling agreement, which means we'll keep working at the issue.
Were there any extensions that the city had been granted or asked and on Fri-, I mean, and how many?
We requested an extension.
One or how many?
Was it one prior to this, Jim, or is this, was this the first extension? Would this have been the first extension?
No, we'd already granted one, and we told them we'd grant it.
So they granted us one at the...
We have granted.
We granted them one?
Yes.
Okay, and then we requested one in return. Jim, you want to step up?
I'm sorry, so we granted the EPA one. I'm just, I'm just trying to piece together an understanding.
Just to be clear, the way the tolling agreement works, some of the claims go back to 2009, there's a statute of limitations on them, and once that runs, we're no longer subject to fines. Well, some of the biggest concerns that the EPA had are from long ago, and we've done a lot of remedial work, as Counsel McCarthy was discussing. So the current climate is that they didn't have a lot to talk about, but they did have some older events.
Older than 2005.
And so they were telling us that our discussions were going to have to come to an end at a certain point because they had to bring a suit in order to preserve those older events. Well, we told them, look, we're trying to work this out with you. We will grant to you, we'll agree to a tolling agreement. And what that does is we waive our rights under the statute of limitations. We waive the right to raise that defense. You kind of told, you stopped time for a while while they continued to talk. So we did that back in 2016. The period expired or was coming up for expiration, the beginning of last year at some point, I forget all the dates, but we granted another one for a longer period of time, and that was ending this past Friday. Well, in December, we sent a letter to the U.S. Attorney talking about some concerns we had and indicating that we were willing to again extend the tolling agreement. But then you may recall the federal shutdown and a couple of other little dynamics entered into the picture where there was no communication for a while from their end. So the tolling agreement was coming up on March 15th, and I'm not sure what happened on their end, but they never asked us to extend it again. And we had told them we would and were interested in doing so.
So when you said we would, was it because we were looking for the extension or we were offering the EPA the extension?
We were always granting them. We were never looking for an extension per se.
So that's where, so that's...
It was something they needed, not, not the, not the city.
So when we had all these issues, and this is, again, I'm just trying to understand this, so when the EPA was coming to Quincy with, or there were complaints, however they, however that happens, complaints go to the EPA, they come out and investigate, they sit down with the city. Did they, was there ever a time that we sat down and we had a consent agreement that we would kind of work towards so we could check off the boxes of the things that we had to fix, much of the things that you have in here? Was that something that we worked on where we kind of identified the issues and created an agreement with them so that we could, other than the tolling agreement, which I understand it goes back to things that were passed, the timeframe was changing because you wouldn't be able to, you'd run out of time to be able to bring them up. So the things specifically that are in here, we don't have the EPA report that we mentioned page 54 on. It would be helpful if the Counsel could have that, too, just so we could see it. I'm sure it's great reading, but I'm just curious, was there, did we ever have an agreement between the EPA and the City of Quincy of the things that we were going to do so that we could kind of check off the boxes as we went?
Well, there weren't checkoff boxes per se, but there was a pretty extensive consent decree that they had proposed to us initially, and it went through several iterations. It's a 60-plus-page document, and it's been negotiated over a prolonged period of time.
So that was never signed? We never agreed to any of that?
Right, we got down to a certain point where there were particular issues that we just couldn't bridge the gaps on.
Okay, so turning back to the City of Quincy, just out of curiosity, and I'm new to the Counsel, but not anymore, I guess I can't, I can't say that anymore, can I? Like, I guess I can say it until I run again. So did we ever do a comprehensive study, a full comprehensive study, not just like when we talk about specific things that are in this pack at this PowerPoint, but a full comprehensive study of the full city, all the sewer lines, so that we, I know we know how many miles we have and we know how old they are, but a full comprehensive study so that we know which ones have to be attacked first and a plan for when we're going to replace those sewer lines that potentially could have cracks or damages in them?
I'll have the engineers come up and answer that, because yes, that's what a lot of this is.
Yep.
And that was part of what was discussed. But before they do, I just want to, one of the big sticking points that we had a problem with was that the EPA was limiting its scope of work to issues within 200 feet of the coastline. They wanted us to spend all our time and money on sites within that 200-foot boundary. We were telling them, no, that that's not cost efficient and it doesn't fit an appropriate priority scale for Quincy because of, as the mayor said, things like the Brooks and other tributaries that run toward the ocean. Mr. Shea can explain this. We have two engineers here tonight, actually. But we were talking about a very comprehensive plan that was citywide and structured, and they wanted something that was a little different, and that was another major reason why these talks broke down. Their narrow focus under the Clean Water Act is right along the coastline, and we're saying, we want to fix stuff that's getting into Furnace Brook, you know, further upstream because that's just as, just as big an issue. So why don't you take that?
Good evening, I'm Joseph Shea. I'm a senior principal with Woodard and Karin, an engineering firm that's been working with the city on wastewater matters citywide. With respect to a comprehensive study, the city has taken several steps in the last four years. The city has modeled their complete sewer system and done what's called a consequence of failure analysis and a likelihood of failure analysis. So those are really technical jargon titles, but what they are is looking at all of the sewer pipes within the city over a certain diameter and modeling that if some of these sewers were to back up and break, which ones would have the most dire consequences. Those, the outcome of that study, which is one of these reports that you see here, is not necessarily within 200 feet of the coastline. There could be challenges in the hills of West Quincy that are very important, and we need to make sure we understand them. There could be challenges inland or in the flat components over in Montclair, for example, the really flat areas near the bog. So there were citywide models that were done, and then out of that modeling and the outcome of those reports, 20% of the sewer system has been evaluated in the last three years by smoke testing, doing TV camera inspection work, going into some houses and flushing dye down the toilets for connectivity. So when it comes to the word comprehensive, citywide modeling has been done, looking at all of the piping, and then 20% of the city has been completed with a very thorough, detailed investigation. And on the current schedule, we're looking to do another 20% in year 2020. Roughly every three years, we're trying to get through 20% of the city with TV inspection, smoke testing, dye testing, some of those, those very much detailed activities, in some cases, it's almost going house to house to determine connectivity.
So only have 20% of the whole city done, but we have a map of all the sewers in the city.
We have a map and a model of all of the sewers, the 200-plus miles.
And when we do this comprehensive study and we work with the engineers and we have issues with the EPA, do you look at the, do you look at the things that the EPA are coming to us with and then also do a recommendation or a study for mitigation for those types of areas that they're, that the complaints are coming in on? Because those are complaints, typically the EPA is not just going to cities and towns on their own, they're coming to city and towns because of phone calls from, or complaints sometimes, yes, sometimes they are, from, I'm getting, my, the head's being checked, no. I realize they do check things in all environments, but when they come out and do extensive studies of those specific areas, sometimes it's because of those things. And in 2011, I can remember many complaints going in to the EPA regarding the town Brook and lots of issues that were being brought up about things. I'm not, and I think there's, some of that stuff was answered in here, because I'm not here trying to cause any problems, I'm just trying to say that there's many reasons why the EPA would come out in that study, that, that report would be very helpful for us here on the Counsel to see what the issues are. The other thing is, I just had, out of curiosity, when we mentioned the cities and towns, just to go back, I don't want to go too deep, I just, I just, I think that there's, you know, there's, there is some validity in checking these things, and it builds trust to be able to see those things, too. But this is, this isn't, you know, it's a, it's a big deal when you go from the EPA to the Department of Justice. This is a big, this is a big step. And when we talk about countersuing, it makes me a little bit anxious because I would think that we would try to, try to work something out, which is, sounds like that's our first step of action, not completely jumping down to countersuing. When asking for a comprehensive study, we only have 20% of our city completed right now, and it was just done in the last four years. This has been going on for, since 2009, it sounds like we've been having regular complaints. It sounds like, and that's what I'm hearing. So my question, too, is when we talked about other communities in Massachusetts facing similar issues, are they, are they facing some issues from the Department of Justice or similar issues from the EPA? Which are they? Are they under the same scrutiny as Quincy is right now from the Department of Justice? We listed Boston's August Revere, Lowell, Lawrence, and Fitchburg.
The, I want to speak to that, Mayor.
I would suggest it's a culmination, and a number of them signed consent decrees and paid a fine. I believe that we have been in a place of doing incredible proactive work on this issue. We have, had not ignored it, where I think some communities may have not made some investment into the systems. Each case is a little bit different, in fact, every case is different. And, you know, some of them are inland and deal with rivers and so forth, but we have been proactive for the last few decades on this issue. And I think it's important to remind people that it was the City of Quincy that sued the state over the whole issue of polluting Quincy Bay. It wasn't a result of an EPA action, it was a result of the people of Quincy tired of the state with 23 communities dumping raw surge into Quincy Bay. That's dumping surge into Quincy Bay. So when we talk about these other examples, I want to make sure it's clear to the folks out there that a number of communities in the call with the Massachusetts have had dealings with the EPA in this issue. Some have signed consent decrees, which then commits them to an aggressive program. I suggested that, in all our discussions, that we have been very proactive, we've got a lot of work done in this city, that I am not going to submit the city to a fine, which suggests that we're doing something wrong. Maybe from the opinion of the EPA, we should be more aggressive with financing it, but we've, we've been pretty steady on this for several years, this administration, the prior administrations on this issue. So we've made great progress, and if you look at, you know, we'll make any and all information available to you, as we have to the EPA right along, but our testing over the years in the waters has shown a steady improvement in the water quality, yet the city doesn't seem to get any credit for that. So, and the issue, look, if this could be fixed, somebody showed me that there's a $40 million fix, we'd do it tomorrow. It's not that simple. It's complicated, the systems are complicated and old and comprehensive, and there's all kinds of potential sources that migrate into the storm drain system. So it's a challenging issue, but I think we've been as proactive on this issue as any community in the Commonwealth.
Again, it's not, I'm specific, I'm talking about something that I don't have in front of me, I don't have the EPA, I don't have the report that you have that you're talking about. I know what you've done, but I don't know what their specific complaints are, so it's hard to say. And when we ask for a comprehensive study that the city has done, we've done a comprehensive study for the mapping of the city, but we've only done 20% of our sewer lines, so it's hard to say that, you know, we, that we could, could even say whether or not we know the areas that there's, I don't know what they're, I don't have the report in front of me. So it's just questions that I, that I'm trying to understand. I don't disagree that the city has tried to do things, but it's not something that's new and it's not something that we didn't know about. We know the EPA has been having issues over the course of at least the last decade, longer. It's not, it's not just that. But to go to the Department of Justice, that's a giant leap from, you know, from, from just working with the EPA to something, there's definitely...
I respectfully disagree. The U.S. Attorney's Office is the arm, the arm for the federal government, the legal arm, just as a solicitor's office is for the departments of the city, so I don't find it as quite alarming, but I understand where you're coming from.
Well, you might not find it very alarming, but I think the residents of the City of Quincy will because it's going to be something that's going to be, it could, if we're going to countersue, it could be something that's going to be very, very expensive. I'm just concerned about what we're doing and how we're going to go about it. I'm sure there's a plan, and I look forward to hearing the updates as we go along. However, you know, when I'm looking at these, some of the things that we're talking about, and you're only specifying page 54 of a report with one thing, and these are all the other things you've done, that's great, but it may not be the things that the EPA were looking for. And again, other communities may have gone into that consent agreement, and in the long run, it, I don't know, I can't say whether or not that was something that Quincy should or shouldn't have done, but, you know, potentially it could be very costly going forward because of, you know, the conversations that have to happen and potentially if we're going to go into a countersuit. So I would hope, I hope, and...
Well, we'll share that, we'll share all that information and get the report to you, and the site on that 54 was, to show you an example, that was a direct surge leakage into the bay, and that was immediately handled once, once we were made aware of it, so...
And I'm sure there's other examples.
Beyond those, it's, it's not that simple. That's why we're talking about all this testing and relining all across the city because of the amount of ways that things can migrate into our storm drain system, you know, and the only way to solve it all would be to build a treatments facilities for storm water, and that would be in the hundreds of millions.
You're talking about storm water and sewer water, so, I mean, I think there's two different things. We have drains, we have two different, ours is separate, right? So the sewers, the sewer lines are separate from the drain lines, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we seem to be combining those two right now, and there seems to be a specific sewer, surge is what we're talking about.
What I'm saying is, we, you have two, you have a lot of utilities underground, you have a sewer line, so if that sewer line is leaking somewhere and it can migrate into the storm drain system.
It can, yes.
And then it follows its way to the water. That's my point. We have two separate systems. That example in French Street was a great example. You know, we had a sewer break on private property, it wasn't backing up into the private property, so nobody knew about it until the numbers started to pop and the investigative work that was done. So we could probably bring the water and sewer up here, and we could spend a few hours on a number of those locations and all the improvements that we've made over the years. The smoke testing goes back to the, to the 90s. Made the first major investment was Quincy Shore Drive, Channing and all those streets off of Quincy Shore Drive to help alleviate some of those illicit connections or, or some of the seepage that gets into the storm drain system, so it's...
Well, then I would imagine that if we went back to the 90s for that, then I would imagine that our engineering firm took that into consideration when they were doing the comprehensive study to be able to say that those lines are potentially secure, because if they were replaced and you weren't doing the smoke testing. But my point is, is that we've got 20%, we don't have a comprehensive, we have a comprehensive, you know, mapping, but again, I'll go back to the comprehensive plan that we don't have that completely done. That, it's just a concern I have because it, that's, that's a small portion of our city, so...
No, I, I appreciate that, and if it was, if this issue was that simple to solve, we would have solved it a long time ago. Even if, once your testing is done, again, the system is old, there could be a break in a line after we, after it was done last week.
Absolutely.
That could happen and migrate into the system. So there's all kinds of potential sources and how they make their way into the system, and we're trying to alleviate all of those that we find, and we're trying to do best practices going forward as a city and encourage, encouraging other people in the city best practices, particularly people that live around a storm drain to keep an eye on it.
No, I agree. I mean, over on Rice Road, we were doing some work over on Rice Road, and we didn't, we, I think through traffic that was going down that road, we cracked a pipe ourselves. So it can easily happen. New lines don't mean perfect, and it doesn't mean that they're, they're done correctly. You, I mean, you can put pipes in anywhere, if it's not, if it's not done correctly, they're certainly not going to hold. I understand that, but what I'm suggesting is the comprehensive study and then also the maintenance of being able to take care of those new pipes once you put them in to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're doing what we said in our due diligence to be able to maintain the structure of those. It's not just putting something new, and it's also making sure that you have a maintenance plan on how you're going to be able to take care of those things. It's not an easy task by any means, I'm not suggesting that. This is an old city, as we've always said, and underground work is not pretty and it's not glamorous, but it does have to be taken care of. Concerned, we like to talk about our 27 miles of coastline, I think it's beautiful as well, and we're being, it's, it's a suit that's being brought to us by the Department of Justice. This is big stuff, and I don't, I don't want to make light of it, and I'm certainly not saying that we're not going to do our due diligence to do it, to make sure that we protect the City of Quincy. However, it's, I just, I just am concerned about it. So I'm raising these issues because it's, you know, a counter conversation would be that we have a comprehensive plan, we have a maintenance plan, this is what we're doing, and this is how we can prevent, and I'm not saying that we're not, this is how we can proactively present ourselves. So it's just, it's just my...
I think we're on the same page.
That's it?
I think we're on the same page.
I think we are, hopefully we are.
Joe Seck, Counsel?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for the Mayor or the engineering team? Mayor, I just also kind of want to... Mayor, I just also kind of want to say publicly, obviously, this became, at least to the public, breaking news late day Friday, which prompted me, as your representative on the city council, to reach out to your office, and I appreciate you guys, you know, putting together what you did, and, you know, coming ready to give a presentation to the, to the council tonight. I know, obviously, it's not a conversation that, how do I say it? It's not the most comfortable conversation at the time, so I appreciate you kind of, you know, just coming to the podium yourself to handle the Q and A. And, you know, my intention in doing this, quite frankly, was to establish a line of communication. So hopefully, and I heard it shared here this evening, that the conversation ensues once we all leave the council chamber. I know we have a, you know, multiple departments here this evening that always make themselves available to answer any questions, but also invite any dialogue, so, assuming that this will continue, and just want to thank you and team again, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, members of the council.
Okay, we are still on communications of reports, and Mr. Clerk has a couple. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a letter here and supporting documents from Gary McCann, policy consultant for MICDI, thanking the city council and Council Harris on the approval of 2019-045, a resolve seeking testimony from Native American organizations regarding preservation of Indian burial grounds on Long Island, and inviting them to April 1st environmental and public health committee hearing.
Thank you. Does that conclude your communication?
Some traffics, sir. We also have a few traffics here. Ward 4, Council Palmucci, add handicap parking at 75 Independence Ave. Ward 6, Council Harris, add do not enter on Hodges Ave intersecting with East Squanam Street from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM school days. Ward 6, Council Harris, add no left turn on East Squanam Street westbound intersecting with Hodges Ave from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM school days. Ward 6, Council Harris, add no right turn on East Squanam Street eastbound intersecting with Hodges Ave from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM school days.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any other reports? Seeing none. Unfinished business from preceding meetings? Seeing none. Reports of committees and Counsel Liang from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, I just have a couple of traffics here. So the first is from Ward 1, it's 2019-047, add handicap parking at 81 Taffrell Road. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion? Madam, excuse me, Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes, eight members.
Okay, the next is in Ward 4, it's 2019-048, add, no, this is Ward 4.
No. She's gotta read it.
So add handicap parking at 92 Rent Terrace. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Mahoney. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes, eight members.
Thank you. And the last four are just in Ward 6. The first is 2019-049, add 2-hour parking on the north side of Spruce Street, Hancock Street to Oak Avenue. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes, eight members, the item passes.
2019-050, add 2-hour parking on the west side of Birch Street, Hollis Ave to Clever Avenue. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk?
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Okay, 2019-051, add 2-hour parking on the south side of Hollis Avenue, Hancock Street to Faxton Road. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Okay, last one, 2019-052, add no parking on the north side of Hollis Avenue, Hancock Street to Faxton Road. I move positive recommendation.
Motion made by Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Harris. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes, eight members, the item passes.
That's it?
That's all. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? When we schedule meetings, yep. Huh? When we schedule it, no, at the end, yep. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Counsel DeBona? Counsel Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to recognize the Quincy Fire Department and the Police Departments for, we had a terrible fire in Ward 3 in Newport Ave, and unfortunately, this property has had significant trouble in the past, and, you know, terrible losses for the families that have lived, and are now seeking other places to accommodate for their living situations. But I do want to thank the Quincy Fire Department and the Police Department for their diligence in taking care of this terrible atrocity. You know, they were very diligent in their response, and I know that there was one also in Copeland Ave recently, too. So, good to see, you know, our, our first responders hard at work, taking care of service for the people, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeBona?
Oh, that was it.
Okay. Any other presentations of petitions, memorials, or remonstrance? I would just like to take a moment and recognize the passing of one Mr. Bob Papa from Lawn Avenue down in Quincy Point, and I remember the actual day quite vividly that I met Mr. Papa when I was first campaigning for city councilor, and just a bright, energetic personality, and, you know, a guy that literally knew everything that was going on in the neighborhood, and just, just a pleasure to have known. He was, obviously, he had multiple children, he was a grandfather to multiple grandkids, and he was just an absolute neighborhood advocate, so certainly, our thoughts and prayers go out to the Papa family in this trying time. With that, any other? No? Okay. Motions, orders, and resolutions? No? All right. Scheduling of committee meeting and public hearings, we're back in this room on April 1st. Counsel Harris, I believe you have a meeting already scheduled, sorry.
Oh, so, yeah, thanks for just bringing it up, and yes, at 6 o'clock, two weeks from tonight. Of course, again, it has to do with the testimony of the Native American organizations that actually thanked us earlier tonight, through the, so I just hope everybody comes out and comes out to see, see and listen to what these folks have to say, and it's pretty interesting reading, as I've been reading up on some of the material that's been brought forward to me, so I look forward to hearing the testimony two weeks from tonight.
Thank you, Counsel, and you're on for 6:00 PM on the 1st?
Yes, please.
All right, and then we'll be followed by a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Counsel Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna schedule two joint finance ordinance and downtown committee meetings for April 3rd and April 29th at 6:30 PM to discuss the impending LDA with Fox Rock.